Amen, praise the Lord, alright. Wonderful, wonderful, hope we will, we get some sound here and there. Amen, thank you Jesus, glory be to God. Hallelujah. Thank you Jesus, amen, we got sound, then we got sound now, prayerfully. Glory be to God, one, God bless you Pastor Ward.
Amen, praise the Lord, alright. Wonderful, wonderful, hope we will, we get some sound here and there.
God bless you Pastor.
Amen, thank you Jesus, glory be to God.
Hallelujah, thank you Jesus, alright, I got, okay, here we go. Alright, God, God bless you Pastor Ward, amen, kingdom's great to you, kingdom great to you, amen, Dr. Calacott. Amen, uh, Ta- tell, um, Minister D, we ready for that word on, we ready for that word on Friday night. So, amen, get, get it to stew and we ready for it. Alright, so we're gonna talk about today. Amen, once again, we're preaching our lesson, kingdom principles, but answer prayers. Amen, and, and we're going down, amen, you probably can't see it on the board, but we'll read it, amen, read it to you. Um, uh, on, uh, we're going to, uh, under, you must, the first one, we talked about that you must be specific and stand on God's promises. That's one of the principles, next bullet, you must ask God for what you want. And now, we're gonna talk about tonight, A, what, can I get a reader, amen, read the title, then read the, uh, read the bullet for, for those that's, uh, listening, minister, can know where we, where we at?
Sense knowledge truth versus revelation truth. If someone said that they were not going to believe God for something, that their physical senses said they couldn't have, I would tell them to go sit down.
Come on.
Then, because according to the scriptures, they would never get anything from God.
Come on.
Believing that way. Believe God and not Satan. Satan operates in the sense realm. He is the God, little G God of this world.
Alright.
Second Corinthians four, four.
We're going to second Corinthians four, four. But so, so when we say, when we say sense knowledge, sense knowledge, uh, truth, what kind of, what, what kind of, what, what are we talking about? Anybody can tell me what we talking about, we talking about sense knowledge truth? Think about that word, sense, knowledge, truth. Come on, think about the, the key word that's in there that's telling you what it. Where your senses, your senses, your five senses. Other words, what you feeling, what you can see, what you can hear. God bless you, amen, God bless you Sister Nette, amen, tell Dave, we, we done, we done went up to the, to the throne for him, so he, everything gonna be alright, tell him everything alright. Amen, God bless you, amen, uh, amen, Sister Sabrina? But anyway, so when we say sense knowledge truth versus revelation knowledge truth, other words, you can't, cause your, your, your senses and your flesh gonna tell you what? What you wanna hear? And, and you can't base, that's Bible says we walk by. And not by. It's sight, one of them senses?
Yes.
So you, you will look at your situation, amen, and you will, you will look at the situation, then you will say, man, ain't no way I can get through this. I, I'm, I'm telling my witness, I lived through it these forty-one years, sometime I'll, I'll face a situation like, God, I can't see no way out. But when we can't see no way out, uh, that means, amen, uh, James, that God has already got the way, amen, made, because God, God. We, we got to trust God, and we can't even trace him, and we can't even see him. We got to know it's gonna happen just by the mere fact he said what, it's gonna happen. We got to take him at his word. So, so once again, a- a- and I put on here, if somebody come to me and say, well, Pastor, I want you to pray for me, uh, the doctor diagnosed me with cancer, the doctor diagnosed me with, 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 amen, diabetes. But I want you to pray for me, but I, I just don't feel like, a- a- that God can't do nothing for me. Ah, but why should, why, why should I waste God's precious time? And my precious time?
Right.
Praying for you? When you don't believe God, that, amen, that God honors his word, his words are, are loud, his words are the loudest of the kingdom. And so, when, when God said, when he said stuff like, Isaiah fifty-three and five, he was wounded for transgression, bruised for abstinence. The chest had a piece of the bone, and by stretch were healed, we got to take him at his word.
Amen.
When he said things like Matthew's eight and seventeen, he himself took our infirmities and bade our sinners, we gotta take him at his word.
Yes.
When he said things like second, amen, Peter twenty, twenty-four, he himself bade, amen, I was, I, I healed, I, amen, we healed, amen, by him ban, amen, on the tree, over on the crouch. Amen, so, so we have to, a- as, as kingdom citizens, we have to just take God at his word, don't try, don't try to, amen, don't try to analyze it. Come on, so, don't try to say, well, wonder would it really work? Get, just move your flesh, man, amen, that old man, we've been talking about, amen, on Sunday, is what we talking about in, in Kingdom Mallet this week. Move that old man out the way and say, old man? I'm not listening to you, God's, if, if God decree I'm healed? I'm what? I'm healed. Come on, no any nits and busts about it, we got to begin to really, man, we got, we got to take God at his word. Okay, so now, now, once again, we know that according to the, the senses, the senses may tell you, hey, your body feel sick. And you don't deny that.
Yes.
Come on, but your, 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 your healing is not based on what your body say, your healing is based on what God said.
That's word saying.
And what the word says. The word say you heal, so I'm gonna say what to heal, so I'm gonna tell, I'm gonna tell the devil, you have no jurisdiction, come on somebody.
Alright.
In God's temple. Cause your body's the temple of God, your body belongs to God. So you, so, so sense knowledge truth i- i- is, is truth, but nevertheless, sense knowledge truth, over power, come on. The revelation truth, and the revelation truth is in God's word. And that's what we're standing on, alright, anybody got anything, everybody, hallelujah. Amen, Facebook, since I got you, since I got you writing, since I got you writing Facebook, write, write this for me, I'm, I'm, I'm trusting only revelation truth. Type that for me, I'm trusting only revel- revelation truth, cause revelation true meaning it comes from God. The Bible says let God be what, true, and every man a what, a liar. Other words, if, if God, if God tell you heal, and, and if God say, he's gonna heal you, gonna bring you out, and you go to the doctor, doc say, well, I, I just believe there's no, no help for you. You got to make the choice of who report you gonna believe. Are you gonna believe God's report? Come on, let's, let's go to Isaiah, let's go to Isaiah fifty-three and one. Amen, I need somebody to write me, amen, I'm gonna, I'm gonna believe and trust, amen, of God's revolution, amen, revelation truth, not, amen, that's, amen, alright, thank, amen, thank y'all that's writing, amen, God bless you, hallelujah. Alright, Isaiah fifty, amen, Isaiah fifty-three and verse one. Let me get a, let me get a reader for fifty-three and verse one. Isaiah fifty-three and verse one.
In the passion translation.
Uh huh.
Who has truly believed a revelation?
Uh huh.
Alright.
To whom will Yahweh reveal his mighty arm?
Oh, read that, can you read that just one more again, come on somebody. Yes, ma'am. Yeah, yeah, the fifty, yeah, the fifty-five, fifty-three and one.
Who has truly believed a revelation? To whom will Yahweh reveal his mighty arm?
So who have believed the revelation, we talking about revelation truth, who have believed the revelation? Other words, and who have Yahweh, which is God, revealed his, his arm, he, he revealed it to those that what, believe what? Believe his word.
Believe his word.
So if you coming already downtime aware, um, I, 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 I know that, uh, Pastor, I need you to pray for me, but, amen, thank you, amen, Sister Nette. I know you, I know you, I know you, uh, asked me to pray, I want me to pray for you, but I just don't believe God gonna do it, okay? If you, you don't believe the report. I believe, I believe the report, God bless you, amen, Chairman Colin Brown, amen. I believe the report, somebody shout, I believe the report. Okay, say that you mean it, I believe, come on, believe the report. His report says I am healed, his report say I am fear, his report says I am free, his report says victor re. And I believe the report, yes, ma'am, you got something here?
No, I was just gonna say the report is right here in Isaiah fifty-three, three through five.
Right, yeah, that, yeah, yes, that's right, come on.
For those that need the word.
That's right, so, so we, so we have to, come on, thanks, we got the, we got, we got to get this, okay, let's go to, let's go to second, second, amen, Corinthians four and four. Come on, second Corinthians four and four, amen, hallelujah, that's right, I, I believe the report, that's right, I believe the report. Amen, stand firm on the report, don't, don't, I, matter of fact, remember, the report is not based on sense knowledge, amen, feeling, sense knowledge evidence. It's not based on how you feel, it's not based on how you smell, taste, you know, it's not based on how you smell, how you see, and how you hear. It's not based on that, it's based on the word of God, cause I done seen some things in my lifetime that, but if it wasn't for the, the faith I have in God, I would tuck my tail like old mutt, took out running. Come on somebody. Because like God ain't know where I'm coming out of this. Alright, second, amen, uh, can I get a, can I get a second, amen, Corinthians four and four? Let, let's start at th- four and three, let's do, let's do three, three and four.
Yes, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
King James Version says.
Uh huh.
But if our gospel be he is.
Okay.
He is here to them that are lost.
Right.
In whom the God of this world has blinded the minds of them who believe not.
Uh huh.
Let the light of glory, of gospel, of Christ, who is the image of God, shall shine unto them.
Whom the God, now, the Bible say we are in the world. But we're not what?
Of the world.
Of the world, why? Because Satan is the God, what, what did those say, read that, read that first part of, 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 of four and four again, of whom?
In whom the God of this world has blinded the minds of them who believe not.
So we, so Satan is the God of this world, Satan is the God of this world system, so you can't base, you can't base your faith in what God is gonna do for you, based on, amen, what, what, amen, what you see? With this, with the natural, the natural, amen, eyes and ears, amen, you may hear, amen, that, that, amen, that's gonna be a recession, you may be in a, something is gonna happen. But you can't base your faith, cause we got three words we've been saying this year, and it's what, the Lord.
Reigns.
The Lord.
Reigns.
The Lord.
Reigns.
The Lord reigns. No matter what, no matter what happens, amen, what you hear, what you seeing, amen, through the, amen, political arena to the, amen, to the social arena, the Lord reigns. Amen, he reigns, so long as we know that the Lord reigns and we are part of his kingdom. Then what the God of this world doing is, is, is not gonna affect us. Hello somebody? We're not affected by it, 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 it's why, because everywhere, every time something happening in this world, we're in devotion. We're in a place of protection.
That's right.
We're, we're in a place where, amen, where we, we're not worrying about it, and, 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 and so, you know, this, when we say stuff like this, that mean we have to, we have to, see, you can't, you can't play with this. You can't, e- either, Jesus say, do you all in or all out? You can't, you can't act like you won't go out today and tomorrow, that's why I say I got problem with, with churches today, because they put the people under so much stress, without, with a lot of rules and rituals. And with a lot of sense, sense knowledge, amen, truth to do stuff, and still, and, and watch this, if it's, if it's a God's kingdom, it's already taking care of. I said this morning in the Mallet, amen, that, uh, Second Peter one and three says everything we will ever need for life and what? Godly has, has already been what? Amen, he already been supplied to us by his what, his, his divine power. We got everything we need, man, we got everything we need. That, I, I just, I just say, bless me, bless me, bless me Lord indeed, for everyone around me having everything they need. So everyone around me can have everything they need. Come on, we got every, when, if any man, if we in you in Christ, you are connected to the, to the Abba Father, A B B A, and Abba mean what? Source.
Source.
Source. You, you are connected to the source, that mean, in, in God's basket of God's kingdom, you got everything that you need. Everything that you want, amen, is already there.
Our God's just like, all I need.
How many?
All I need.
Oh, now, some of them sometimes.
All I need according to his riches.
Oh, it, it ain't about your, it ain't about your checkbook and your purse?
No, 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 his riches.
Yeah, oh, well, he's rich, tell you that he's rich. Come on, he's, he's rich.
His riches.
And the Bible says, he became poor, that through his poverty.
We might, you know.
We might be.
Rich.
Rich. So we learn how to put, we learn how to put our agenda to the side and trust God.
That's right.
Oh, I feel, I feel the Holy Ghost in the house tonight, come on somebody, because this is the time for the church to wake up. We ain't got time, we ain't got time to get out of, amen, get out of position, we ain't got the time, amen, we got to stand right, standing with the king, come on somebody. Because the devil is, the devil is, amen, remember, it said the little G God, he said, the little G God, amen, he is the little G God of this world.
Right, right.
That mean, he's not the big G God, because we, the, the big G God is Jesus, come on somebody, the Christ, you know the King. He's the little G God, he's the God of this world. But God has given us power. Over the God of this world.
Uh huh. Yes, he is.
Luke ten nineteen said, behold, I give you power, I give you authority.
Authority.
Amen, to tread over serpents and over scorpions, and nothing shall by any means what, harm you. That's, come on, we gotta take God at his word tonight, the devil gonna study, beat the church down.
That's right.
God bless you, God bless you, that baby sis. So we got to, thanks, we got to get this right, amen, so, once again, when you, when you follow these principles, when you ask God for what you want? And you know, once again, Matthew seven and seven, we talked about last, what you asking is should be giving? Seeking you shall find, knocking the door should be open. Mark eleven twenty-three and twenty-four said, whoever should set his mouth, be not removed, be not cast in the sea, and should not die in our heart, but believe nothing what you say, should come to pass, he should have whatsoever he say. Come on somebody. So we, 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 we got to just take God at his word, ask God for what you wanted, and, and take him back, take him back to his word, go ahead, I didn't say it, you told me if I ask him, you gonna give it to me.
I believe in reports.
Come on. Won't he do it?
Yes, he will.
I said, won't he do it?
Yes, he will.
Yes, he will, come on, yes, he will, amen, amen, won't he, he would do it what, sometimes?
Oh.
Sometimes?
Every time.
Sometimes?
Every time.
I got that new Saint version, I got that religious version of it. God would just do it sometimes, God don't answer the prayer, the devil is alive. Jesus said in Second Corinthians one and twenty, but all, all the promises what, in?
Him.
Him or what?
Yea.
Yea, and what?
Amen.
To the what?
Glory of God.
God said, I'm, I'm, remember, you, you, you hear me say all the time, when you ask God for something according to word, and you, I mean, you paying your tithes, you coming to church faithful, you fasting and praying, you, you doing what you need to do. And, and, and that mean, that mean God's reputation is on the line if he don't do it. That's why, that's why I'm bold to step out with it, amen, ever, cause I'm bold to step out with it, cause I'm saying, God, I told them, amen, that if, 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 if they seek first the kingdom, amen, kingdom of God and his righteousness. That, that, that all the bonuses belong to them, so God, I'm telling them that they gonna get the bonus when they do things according to your word, and I'm stepping out bolding, and God, man, it's up to you to do what you say you gonna do. Cause I, 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 look, watch this, I don't fail before, so they know man fail. But we know there's no failure what?
In God.
In God. That's why I stopped singing these old un- unstripped songs, he never failed me yet. Like you anticipating from the fail. God can't fail, failing not, no way God from heaven live. He said in, in Philippians what, four and thirteen, we can do how many things?
All things.
Through who?
Christ.
Now you, now, it's got to, it's got to get filtered through who? Through Christ. Who what? Who strengthened us. Amen, hallelujah. Yes, Lord, alright, so, so once again, let me, let's, let's read, amen, anybody got any question, come here, on, 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 on the first part, amen, uh, that we talked about. The knots, let me get a reader for, for the next bullet, and we, let's get these strippers down. Come on, let me read it for you, darling.
You'll never get anything spiritually until you realize that there are two kinds of truth.
Uh huh.
Sense knowledge and revelation truth, which is the truth of God's word. Spiritual things are not natural, and they are not material. God's word provides everything we need for us in the spiritual realm, Ephesians one and three, and Second Peter one, three and four.
Alright, now I know that Second Peter one, three and four, I want that bit from the passion for sure. Uh, I, the other one is not, but watch, look what it says. What, where do everything start, start out there, when you praying as God, and it, it, and, and it goes up to heaven, it, it, it start out spiritual first, and then it materialize where? On earth, because when you praying as God for something, God is telling them angels, did you hear? Did, did you, the KC, what, you, you ever remember the KC, what they prayed? You better get that thing on the way right away, what you, what you, what you sitting back, grab back for, you get your, but they, they not grab back, because they not grab back, because the church ain't praying, and the, and angels, I would say, putting their thong, looking for something to do. But, but thank God KC, we keeping them busy, come on somebody, I said, we keeping them busy, because we're gonna speak the word, we're gonna trust God, we're gonna take God at his word, we're gonna do what God's word says gonna do. Amen, we're gonna keep on fighting and fighting, amen, hold it fast to the word, once again, I don't know if I asked you to share this, if you, if you're watching me, please, ma'am, please, uh, sir, amen, share this, amen, cause, so your people can start giving their prayers answered, so they can come out of lack, so they come out of sickness. Alright, anybody got me Ephesians one and three? Ephesians one and three.
King James Version.
Uh huh.
Bless be the God and Father of our Lord Jesus Christ.
Uh huh.
Who has blessed us with all spiritual blessings in heavenly places in Christ.
There in where?
In Christ.
So, so it's got to get happening in Christ, and Christ is the Greek word for the, uh, for the Messiah, which is the Hebrew word for what? King. So it's got to tell you that it's got to get routed through the king. Come on, y'all ain't saying nothing, I'm, I'm talking, it's got to get routed to the king. Come on, need y'all to say that. Got to be routed to the king, cause if it don't go to the king, then it can't be spiritual, it can't come from him. Come on. Now, did it, did it, did it say, bless the Lord, I'd say, Father, who has blessed us with some spiritual things, some spiritual blessings? Our spiritual blessings. Do, do, do anybody in Bible say something, do, did anybody in Bible say, my Bible say something, like, anybody in Bible say some? Oh, that's that new, oh, I'm sorry, that's that new, that's that new Saint, uh, interpretation of it. That's that religious interpretation, cause they think that God don't, God won't bless you with every spiritual blessing, or our spiritual blessings, amen, amen, in Christ, he, he just do it sometimes, you got to take God at his word. You got to take him at his word, that's right, it's, it's got to be, that's right, through, through the king, that's right in there, it's got to, it's got to be, amen, amen, it's got to be, hallelujah, has to be, yeah, come on somebody, hallelujah, alright. Um, so it said, God bless you, amen, brother, sir, God bless you, sir, so that's why we, see, once you learn that, if, if, that, don't base, don't, don't base nothing of God with, with sense knowledge. Man, I, man, you, you, you go back in, in, in your spare time, read Romans the eight, the entire, Romans eight chapter, and the first, the first time, he's, he'll tell you, day that in the flesh cannot please God, that the, that the flesh is an entity against God. Amen, that, amen, he that is, he that is fleshly minded cannot receive things from, from God, amen, the, the, the fleshly man and the, and minded man and the spiritual minded man has no, amen, has no communion. You got to, amen, the, the Bible says, many that are led by the spirit, amen, they are the sons of God. Amen, we, amen, we, we wrestle not against flesh and blood, but against what, spirits. Amen, Ephesians six and, amen, starting at the ten, and, and left, when it left the verse rather, put on the whole armor. Because the enemy, amen, is out the kids feeling destroyed, but, but, but we know that we've been given what, dominion, come on, over him, and we're not accepting it. That's why take heed to what you hear, don't, don't take your walk with the king lightly. I said, don't talk to, take your walk with the king lightly, and that's why I think, and, 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 and that's why I thank God, for, for, and, and I said it, amen, in the, in the, uh, the Mallet this morning, and I said it yesterday m- morning, and I, I said it again, probably at, at Mallet tomorrow at eleven. I thank God for the KC, because we, we hunger and thirst for righteousness, and I mean that, if you, and you, when you see people hungering and thirsting for righteousness, they don't want nothing else but truth. Come on somebody. They don't want, they don't, they, they yearning for it, and, and the reason why they, they, they yearning for it, because they, they're, they're, they're healed, they, they want, they hear the word, they, they're not making excuses why they can't get here, they getting here. We all get tired, come on somebody. We all get, amen, feel like, Lord, I just don't feel like, I don't feel like getting going. I don't feel like going to church today, but, but I don't know about you, I tell you, but when I get in the KC for some reason, once we, once we enter these doors, man, I, I get renewed like, amen, my strength get renewed like the eagle, come on somebody, I get excited. Amen, about the word, alright, anybody got, oh, Second Peter, of passion, three and four. Anybody get that, in the passion?
I have it.
Okay.
Everything we could ever need.
That's what I just talking about. Okay.
Has already been deposited in us by his divine power.
Come on, come on.
For all this was lavished upon us through the rich experience of knowing him, who has called us by name and invited us to come to him through a glorious manifestation of his goodness.
Now watch four, watch four.
As a result of this.
Come on.
He has given you magnificent promises that are beyond all price, so that through the power of these tremendous promises, we can experience partnership with the divine nature, of which you have escaped the corrupt desires that are of the world.
Somebody's shouting for me, God's kingdom is priceless.
God's kingdom is priceless.
Matter of fact, I need you to write, those that watching me live via Facebook, write for me, God's kingdom is priceless, cause it says we have a magnificent what promise? Read, that, that's what it said, uh, on that, uh, uh, genie?
Yes.
A verse four, can you read that first part again, that first part only?
As a result of this, he has given you magnificent promises that are beyond all price.
All price, all price, other, there's no price too big that God can't pay, cause he already paid it what? He paid it all.
Yes, he has.
He paid it all, with his precious blood, that's why I'm saying, why, why we would let Jesus, amen, uh, it's like the, I'm thinking about the, the pair of, of the good Samaritan. And, and they began to tell, he told, you know, he had the religious folks walking what, on the other side of the road, them church folks walking around, they seen a man in need, they walking around. But then the Bible said, a good Samaritan came, and he said. And he said, he, the Bible said, he, he, he cussed up his wounds, took him to the hotel, and told the, told the owner of the hotel, amen. Amen, take care of his, amen, whatever he, he had, amen, how long he need to stay, let him stay, and I'll take care of the tab on my way back. So how can we, amen, how can we, knowing that Jesus already paid the tab, Lord, help me, somebody should have got excited. God already paid the tab for everything you and I will ever need in his kingdom, and we won't take advantage of it and do what he will have us to do. Watch out, ever. Yes, sir, come on. Come on, he done paid the tab. We, we, we sing the song what, we're fighting a what? A battle? That's already won. We, we, we're trying, we're trying, trying to get, get, don't get victory, you already got the victory. Don't get, don't get healing, healing has already been, the price of healing been paid on the cross. I'll be just ready, was wounded for your transgression, rue for your nigger, chest time, this piece of onion, by a stripes, you're here, I just fit the three and five. Don't, don't be time of Lord, I, 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 to plow my knees, he, he promised you, amen, in the word, he comes to plow your knees. You just need to start declaring what he'd already de- declared. Wealth and riches is in my house, ain't no poor folks in God's kingdom. He says wealth and riches, amen, hallelujah, that's right, we have a victory, that's right. Amen, thank you, amen.
We just need to decree what his word.
We got to, we got to decree what his word said, Joel twenty-two and twenty-eight, we speak, sometime I sound like old Brooke record, but that's okay. Faith come by. Faith come by. Faith come by. And hearing by the what? Word of God. And like you may almost always say, doubt and unbelief come by hearing too. That's why you got to mention what you hear.
Take heed to what.
Take heed to what you hear. Just be, just, amen, just because you parked in a garage don't make you a car. Come on somebody. And just, just cause something sound like his kingdom, don't mean his kingdom.
Alright now, you in there.
Come on, just like, just cause, just cause it's somebody's song, sound like they kingdom, don't mean that they kingdom, they, amen, just like, just don't say like I say. You parking, you going to come out, you, 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 you rattling, woo, coming up the driveway, this, this you, now this ain't the car. Okay, honk, okay, you ain't no car. Go, go, go put your arm down and go in the house, somebody. You, 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 you got to be, this is real. This is not no fantasy. This is real. The power of God is real, God just need, you know what God just need? Some ambassadors that will put it to the test. Bring all your tithes and offerings to the storehouse, Melicap three and ten, that that may be meat, well, in my house, watch this. And what? Prove me. And do what? Prove, put me to the test, that way, then I would not what? Open up the windows of heaven and do what? South, south shaker. South shaker, just, it only comes when you shake the south, and then, you can turn it, but you ain't shaking, he, that, that, that's what folk think, he shouts shaking, south shaking, bruh, blessing. He said, when you do it, I'm, I'm pouring it out, well, and all these blessings, Jude around the twenty-eight, when all these blessings should come up on you and do what? Overtake you. When you, when you ask, amen, when you ask God for what you want, and you ask him in faith according to the, 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 the standards of the Bible, it's yours. I, 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 I dare you to try it. I tried it. And I love it. I tried it, I'm excited. I tried, I tried it, watch this, and ain't no turning back. Cause when you, when you find something that worked, cause once again, we, we know religion didn't work. A whole lot of hope and wishing, whole lot of shotgun blast. Hope you hear something, please hear something, please, please, and, and, and once again, watch this, you pray about it. And, and beg God, please God, I beg you, please God, please God, please do it, Lord, please God, God don't want you to beg him, God want you to believe him. Amen, don't beg him, but what? Believe him. Come on, that's right, amen, my, my sister, my, my brother, I said, I tried it, that's right, and it works. Watch this, every. Come on. It works. Alright, anybody got anything before we move to the next page, yes ma'am?
It's like, uh, when I joined the army. Scared the death of guns, right? But I had to learn how to use it. The more I went to the range, the better my shot got.
Right.
Okay, just like using scripture.
Right.
When you learn how to use it, the better you get.
Right.
It gets better and better with practice, okay? Yes, I started hitting bullseyes, and that's the way it is with the word.
That's right.
Yeah, stopped hitting shotgun, hitting all over, hitting somebody else's target, no, I'm not hitting nobody else's target, I hit my own target.
That's right.
Bullseye in my own target, so it works, prove me now, the Lord said, prove me now.
That's right, prove me.
Okay, get out there on, get out there on the range and watch my own lane.
Watch this, they told us on, those in the military, thank God, once again, happy birthday to everybody. They, they, they had, they had the, the people at the range, they said, clear on the right, clear on the right. Clear on the left, clear on the left, clear in the center, clear in the center. Fire us. Watch your lane. Otherwise you shooting straight to your target. Now I done seen people, amen, that shoot, 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 and then when you get to shoot, they tell you, they know how to place your weapon down, because they don't want nobody have their weapon while you walking down range, check your target out, and I seen people that walk down there and say, I ain't hit no. Amen, what, what did I hit, I thought I was hitting the target, and all their bullets on the, on, on, on my target. But it said, watch what? Come on, watch your lane.
Somebody else target got extra, uh, shots on it.
Yeah, and somebody else target got, so, so, so once again, what I'm saying, stop trying to be like everybody else and watch. Stop try, try, trying to cop everybody else and watch. Amen, do what God told you to do. You may not be, you, you, you may not be comfortable in it right now, but I, I, I thank, I thank God for, trying to giving that example, because a, a lot of times you, you trust up, even driving for the first time, you, you driving for the third time, you're not comf, you're not coming. But the more you do it, you're comfortable, now, most of us, especially us today, we don't even think about, we don't even think about, um, get, we get in the car, just what? Just go, we don't, we ain't trying to work, like we weren't nervous, okay, that, that, you know, that, see, so the, the, the more you practice God's principles. The better it gets. But the problem is, we, God needs some faithful holy, holy bonus, look at that word, holy bonus. God need some holy bonus people, amen, once again, you watch, watch me online, type these, type this word, holy bonus, that's gonna be a word you're gonna be hearing a lot from me. Like, amen, for the rest of this year, holy bonus, yes ma'am?
Your trust level go from zero to, to a hu- a hundred percent.
Right, amen, yes sir.
So it's just like that automobile.
Right.
The, the, the more you drive, the more you know how to operate.
Right, right. Right.
Alright now, I like that.
The more you, you operate that weapon, that weapon, the better you become it, because you gotta sight that weapon in.
Right.
You know, the, up and down and over, and then you, you, you get so good that you can account for the.
Right, the, the, right, the witness and everything, yes sir, yes sir, yes sir.
Learn how to operate.
Right.
And the same thing with the word of God, you know, it's how do we operate?
And, and you know, you know, that's, that, that making me think, uh, we, we, when, when I, you know, grew up, you know, in the military, when, you know, when you're registered, then you, you, you firing M sixteen, and we fired some M sixes and some fifty cal's, you know, for, for, of things too. But I made, your main weapon was M sixteen. So after, after I came out of, amen, one off to school, and I became an outside, I, I got the par- cavalry, a nine millimeter, a nine millimeter. And so therefore, it was totally different. Cause now, I, 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 once again, at the time, I never really fired on, on, even a pistol like that. And, and, that was a forty-five, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, when I went, it was a forty-five. And so, when I, when I, and, and anybody know anything about firing forty-five, that, 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 that recall kicks back. And, and, and I messed around, and, and if you don't have your hand, your hand in the right place down here, it'll tear out, I mean, it's gonna tear all of that up, I'm, I mean, and I got it all tore up. Come on somebody. And so you think, now you, now here I am finding another weapon for the first time. And then it got all tore up and had, had big, amen, big bruised cuts, and, amen, so bad, I almost had to get stitches in them. And now, I got to go back and buy that, cause that's my weapon I got to qualify with, ma'am? So once again, what, what I'm, what you're saying, you still got to do what's right too, I became, amen, pretty good, come on, so, so. Like, one thing about it, it wasn't, it wasn't gonna cut me, it wasn't, it wasn't gonna click this no more, then maybe it's just something else. But it wasn't gonna tear this up again, cause I made sure that hand was way down there when I was firing. Oh yeah, even give him a recall, that's right. Come on. So that's the way to work up, don't, don't worry about your, you, 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 fight your battle, fight, fight your battle, you gonna win. Don't give up. Amen, practice, 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 man, I told you before, practice stuff that you may ain't believe when you saying it. I told you before, remember, man, I got married, amen, I don't, thirty years ago, hey, we, 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 we were so broke, we, we, amen, we couldn't even choke. Come on somebody. And, and then, somebody say, well, you need, well, now the law that told me, say, you need to start quoting Deuteronomy twenty-eight, chapter verse one through fourteen, and I got even satisfied about this book. And I started saying it, saying it, saying it, and it, and, and it wasn't working, things seem like the more I said it, the worse things got. But I kept saying it, I kept saying it, I can't, I can't, I got better in it, amen, I'm, I was shooting outside the target, now I'm leasing the target, come on somebody. And then the more I practiced, amen, now I'm in the bullseye. And I kept saying, I kept saying, and next thing the Lord, Lord said, but look at you now. You got money in your pocket, bills paid in full, so you got to, you got to take God at his word. God, Deuteronomy twenty, I mean, uh, number twenty-three and nineteen says, God is not a man. That he should lie. Neither son of man that he should repent. If he's saying it, he's gonna do it, if he's spoken it, he's gonna make it good, do we need to, do we need to turn on, do we need to hit that? You can, okay, alright, alright, so, so.
Yes, we do.
Okay, well, well, shut up, you want to turn it on, let it out, it, it don't want. So, so once again, let, let's, come on saints, let's, let's take God as word, ask God for what you want? Don't ask him according to what you feel, I, it's plenty of time, I done prayed for God, I done prayed, asked God for something, and didn't even feel like it was gonna happen. Come on, I'm gonna be honest, but I don't feel like this gonna happen. Yeah, that's what we need to pray, God, help thou my unbelie. Because I said it to, I, 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 it, I believe, it, it's like, it's like negative stuff or positive stuff. Amen, you, you say it into it, it becomes so, so real to you, that you, 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 you gonna believe it's gonna happen regardless, you, you, matter of fact, you're gonna be fully persuaded that it's gonna happen and nothing gonna change that. Come on, we got, we got it, we, but we gonna get, one thing about KC, we gonna get it, we, 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 we not gonna get, we got it. We got, we got that holy bonus, we gonna start saying it, amen, God the doctor, well, I've been having this bad, I've been having this report from the doctor for ten years. Well, how many people know that God can do something in ten minutes that it, it takes, amen, ten, ten years, amen, to do, or, 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 God can do it, cause what? What's our three favorite words? Immediately, suddenly, and at once. Come on somebody. It's done. Alright, anybody got anything while we?
What's the verse in Deuteronomy that you say?
Deuteronomy twenty-eight, verse one through fourteen, remember, that, that's a good, that's. Now, now I tell people all the time, verse twenty, it's sixty-eight chapters in now.
Sixty-eight verses.
Sixty-eight verses, I brought, the first fourteen verses are the blessings to, to God's kingdom citizens. But I tell people, if, if once in a while, go and read, you need to read fifteen through sixty-eight. Come on, to remind you why you, why you wanna stand under God's kingdom. I mean, it, 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 I tell people, yeah, I, I, I tell you read, um, one through fourteen, but you need to read fifteen, sixty-eight for you to get a reminder. This is why I'm standing under God's kingdom. Because when you get to start, when it start telling you, you cursed here, you cursed there, your children cursed, your, your, your house, your food, your cabinet, your body's cursed. Come on, come, why? Because we're not, we're not asking according to the revelation knowledge God gave us. But amen, we asking, we asking, that's why we always, amen, even prayer before we get uphill, or during the prayer. Y'all always hear me pray, Ephesians one, one seventeen and eighteen. That a father, uh, uh, in the Lord's name, Jesus Christ, the father of glory, may give unto us what? The spirit of wisdom and the what? Revelation, cause I want what kind of truth? What, now what kind of truth I want? Revelation truth, not no sense, I, but I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to approach, and I'm not trying to approach this situation with my, with sense knowledge. Because I don't see no way out. Come on, but he's, but he says, amen, amen, and the revela, amen, wisdom and revelation now to what, of him, we wanna know about him.
In the knowledge of him.
In the knowledge of him, that's right, we wanna know, we wanna know about him, we don't wanna, we don't wanna be, amen, I, that's why I'm, I'm caution. Amen, I'm caution, amen, God's people everywhere, get in truth, get in truth and stay in truth, come on somebody. E- e- everything that says, Lord, Lord, is not, is not gone. Everything that say, Lord, amen, get, get, get in truth and stay in, amen, or don't let the, what's, what's the enemy's job? To come to what, steal? Kill and destroy, his job is to get you out, get you out, amen, would it, would, would it be because you done got in the flesh? Or you done got in your sense knowledge true? Should the devil tell you something in your, in your flesh, in your five senses about, about a person, about a ministry? That's nowhere close to truth. But he telling you that because he wants you to lead and get out of the, the revelation truth, that's gonna keep you through any situation. This is a spiritual battle. But we win, somebody shout, we win. If you watching me live via Facebook, type, we win, type, we win, come on Facebook, type for me, we win, alright, I got, oh, okay, we got, uh, time go a little fast. Okay, can I get a reader? Yeah, the first book, the first bullet, so they can hear what kind of what it's saying.
This means that everything we need has been provided for us in Christ Jesus. You can't see those things, but they are there because God's word says they are there. For we walk by faith and not by sight.
Amen, we gotta go, that's what, that's what Second Peter five and seven says, for we walk by. We walk by what? And not by? We walk by. And not by? Come on, so faith is the currency what? Of the kingdom. Faith is the currency of the kingdom, other words, we, we know that everything we exchange our faith for in the kingdom, we gonna receive it. How many times? How many times? Come on, if we need healing, and we say, God, by faith, I believe that my body is healed of, and, matter of fact, and if you know what the, what the doctor have, if doc knows you with, you, you say, God, I believe by faith that my body is healed of this, whatever it is. And you taking and do it.
Hebrews eleven and one.
Come on, now faith is, the currency of the kingdom. Faith has one time zone, and it's when? Tell your neighbor, it's now clock. Tell them it's now o'clock. Facebook, I need you to type for me, it's now o'clock, come on, cause God say, it's done now. I told you, man, next, next month, we have two years as a ministry, like, kinda blew our faith. We be two, we got our two year anniversary next month. Woo, glory, come on, let's get the Lord in the praise for that, we got our two year, my God, we got our two year anniversary next month. And, and I said just to say this, because right two years ago, right before we, amen, when God, amen, God gave me a vision about, about the KC. And I, and I, and I shared this, I shared this testimony, amen, and some of you haven't heard it before, but it, 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 it bails, amen, we all come out of blood of the lamb and by what? The word, by testimony. Amen, right before I began, amen, to, to start this church, uh, the devil attacked my body, amen, I didn't know what, I didn't know what had happened. Amen, all I know is I began to have to urinate every, amen, it's like every ten to fifteen minutes. Even couldn't even make it, amen, to the, the VA, amen, I took, took, and wait, once again, to, amen, had to take something and, and pull it to the side, come on somebody, that's how bad it was. Then got to the doctor, I, 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 I know I shared this with some of you, but if you don't, you hear the next, I'm transparent. And so, I know what the devil was doing, he was trying to make me stop moving forward for opening this up, cause he know that this was getting ready to be a blessing to God's people. Got to the doctor, never, never had diabetes, never been, come on somebody. In, in, in my life, cause I never, I never decreed a plan of. In, in, in my life, cause I never, I never decreed a claim, and I never decreed a claim two years ago. Got there, and they put me, amen, had me a, amen, once again, study your, your, and they, so they give me, you know, do what you got to do to take care of it. And then they get me in the, in the, they run the test on me, I guess, run the. In the, in the immersion room, run a glucose, and come back, amen, doctors, all talking to each other, time out. I'm like, what, what they talking about? Cause I'm feeling fine, I'm, I mean, my body's feeling fine, what they, what they talking about? Come back to say, Mr. C, Mr. Collins, I've never seen a glucose yoke that high in my life, I've been in, in medicine, amen, thirty some years, and never seen no glucose that I would, and my skin, I don't, I'm, I mean, I, I kinda know what a glucose is, but I ain't know what it's got. And then it says, your glucose was eight hundred and seventy. They say you shouldn't even be alive, you should be in a diabetic coma, I'm like, I should? Come on, and I'm sharing you this, this, that, because now when you out, they took me in immediately, while they hooked up all kind of OBs and start putting insulin in me, blah, 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 blah. And amen, and they got, they finally got it down to three hundred, they let me go home, and I got home, they think, and you know, you know, you know, you didn't let me know what I need to pray for, and decree and decree, and that's, so you in trouble. And that's what I begin to decree and decree, and that I stand before you today. Amen, if I get a glucose, amen, over, amen, one hundred, amen, and fourteen, amen, I, amen, I'm doing bad, come on, somebody. Why? Because I stood on the word. I, 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 I stood on God's promise, I asked God for what I want, I didn't go by how, what, what I was feeling, or what I was seeing, I stood on the word. Come on, somebody. Come on, we, and, 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 and the reason why I share it with you, because if, if, if God did it for me, he'll do it for you. Don't, don't, and, and see, it, it's, 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 when things come up on me, like, like, like if I get a, a, something that's unusual, like a bump somewhere, or, or pain, like, a pain in the back on this, I say, hold up, Lord, it came out of nowhere? And just what? It's gonna leave out of nowhere. Cause it's getting out of here. We cannot, we cannot accept that, we cannot accept that. So once again, that mean everything that been provided, we just talked about what, First Peter, Seventh Peter one through everything we ever need for what? Life of God has already been deposited away, heaven has already deposited in you, you got to wake it up. It's been deposited in you, but if you say what the enemy wants you to say, oh, I got, hey, and that's what gets me, can, can, well, that's not happening here, Lord, I decree, ain't happening here. Stop telling people, I, I got high blood pressure, I got diabetes, I got cancer, you taking what? You taking ownership of it. That's like, I'm saying, I got this nice shirt in me, I got these shoe, they, they belongs to me. Don't take ownership of that stuff, if, 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 if God had not given it to us according to his word, we let it know, oh, yeah, you, you are a foreign object that's trying to, amen, attack my body, you in the wrong, you in, you are in the wrong jurisdiction, cause ain't no sickness in, in, in the jurisdiction which I live in. Come on, somebody. That's right, amen, Sister Brady, that's right, he have no respect to person. If he did it for me, he'll do it for you. Cause that's what I did, I said, God, I, I don't, I don't know how, I never been diagnosed with this, and I, I, I didn't, I didn't, I don't know what, what is supposed to happen, but it, it, it ain't gonna happen here. But now, yeah, and, and what's, what's so, what's so awesome about it, is once we started the church, uh, in December twenty twenty three, that's when it went down. So what did I tell you? The enemy was trying to what? Attack, that I wouldn't start this. Come on, somebody.
He did not win.
No, no, he did, he did, and I told you, I gave testimonial Sunday about, amen, actually lost my life, amen, fifty, lost the whole function and breath of my body to my wife, amen, began to speak and call on the name of Jesus, brought me back. So once again, just what? If, if he wouldn't have brought me back, I wouldn't be here today. But see, he knew that he had this what? This mission for us. He know he had this mission for us, cause, cause he said, I'm gonna find me a, I'm gonna find me at least one embassy, that's gonna be bold enough, holy bonus, to start going out and decreeing the clap thing, so I can show the world that it works. Come on.
Amen.
Come on, it works, somebody shout, it works.
It works.
All right, let's get one more, then we, then we gonna give a code. Uh, when sense knowledge truth, watch this, I'm reading the second bullet, when sense knowledge truth contradicts revelation truth, which is the truth of God's word, then I start walking by what? Revelation truth. That which is in those spiritual realm is made real in the what? Natural realm, through what? Through faith, amen, in the word of God, other words, faith is the currency, is, is now clock, now faith is. Faith grasping and creates the reality of it, amen, in our lives. Let's get Romans four seventeen, then we gonna, we gonna, we gonna, we gonna close after this, Romans four seventeen, amen, we got the authority to call stuff, they, they probably say, well, we don't have no more positions ready on this jaw. But if God sent you there and told you he's gonna give you a jaw there, just what God's gonna do, he's gonna create a jaw. But why? Because he's, he's told you, if, if, if the spirit led you and told you, amen, to do it, then you could register, I counted the time, they said they got, they ain't got no, no positions open. God's gonna create you a jaw. Come on, can I get a, a couple of, a couple of, amen, uh, uh, different versions of Romans four seventeen, we gonna get ready to close. What's this, all right.
That's what the scripture means when it says.
Uh huh.
I have made you the father of many nations.
Right.
He is our example and father, but in God's presence, he believes that God can raise the dead and call into being things that don't even exist yet.
Called to, called to be that what? That jaw didn't, that jaw didn't what? Didn't exist. But notice what he said, yet, that mean you know, but it's what? It's on the way. Come on, now, now, let me ask y'all, let me ask KC something, am I saying this, or, or is the, heaven constitution saying this, oh, am I saying it, or they saying that? Answer that, am I saying it, or they saying? Are, are, are we, are we saying, I'm, I'm, we, I'm saying what he's saying, and so I'm in good hands. Come on, somebody, we, so once again, what's, what's another translation? Anybody got the Amplified Classic? Uh, 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 somebody read the ones you have, you got one, somebody read what you have, I want somebody to get that in Amplified Classic. Watch this.
As it is written, I have made you the father of many nations.
Uh huh.
He was appointed our father.
Uh huh.
In the sight of God, whom he believes.
Mm hmm.
Who gives life to the dead and speaks to non-existent things that he has foretold and promised, as if they already existed. Genesis seventeen five.
He speak to non-existent things, just in their reality, as though they what? Already exist. Did Jesus not say that in Genesis one, and then one, when he begin to God, created heaven and earth, and the earth was all forming void, it was, it was chaos? And God spoke non-existent thing, which was at the, at the time, no light existed, God said, let there be light. And so, not light was a non-existent, non-existent thing, but when God spoke it, it became light. Same thing happened to you when you speaking, you just got to have the faith. You just got to have the faith. All right, we, we gonna, we pick up here, uh, next, next Bible study, let's remember, we stopped that, amen, right out of Romans four seventeen. All right, anybody got any questions, any comments they wanna make, amen, before we. Lord, it beat you, God, but that, that, see, that's why, that's why the word is so good, cause faith come by, faith come by, faith come by. So you never can, you tired of hearing this word. Yes, ma'am.
What does sense knowledge mean?
Sense me, sense not mean, you don't, you don't base God's word on how, how you feel, what you see, what you hear. Like you probably hear, like you hear this, this, this clatter in the, in, 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 in our nation, that, you know, different things, and, you know, gonna happen, or, you know, and that mean you can't base God's word on that, you gotta say, okay, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not basing my word on my, on what I hear. Oh, yeah, uh, uh, my, uh, uh, he says in Proverbs three and five, trusting the Lord with all thy heart and lean not to understand, so I mean, don't base God's word on, you may, you may say, oh, I feel, I feel sick, but don't base that on your feelings, cause God said you heal. So don't say I'm sick, say I'm healed, so, so when he say sense knowledge, it's saying based on stuff that you, that your natural man, the five, your five senses, because why? Faith is the sixth sense, and we live in the sixth sense, cause faith allows us what? To see God. Faith allows us to heal God, faith allows us to smell God, faith allows us to touch God, and faith, amen, allow, amen, us to see God and the taste of God, oh, that's why it said in the psalm, it's oh, what? Oh, taste and see, oh, whoa, Lord, so you got, so, so faith is that sixth sense that lie you, so, so sense knowledge, if sense knowledge is basically, don't, don't limit God to how you feel. Don't limit God to what you see, because you can see some stuff that, Lord, this don't look promising at all. But by faith, I'm believing God, that I have exactly what you say I have. Come on.
A situation can look entirely impossible.
Yeah, what's seen impossible with, with man, is possible with God.
It's possible with God.
What's seen impossible with man, that's impossible.
The trust in the Lord.
Yeah.
With all your heart, and lean not to your own understanding.
Right.
With all your ways of not seeing.
Yeah, Proverbs three and five, once again, that mean, don't, don't lead to your own understanding, don't we gonna lead, lead to your, what, your senses, so the way you think that I'm gonna do it, cause you, God, you try to think, you doing it one way, God said, I'm doing it a whole new way.
Even, like, even like a doctor's report based on what they, they have learned.
Right.
Okay, because doctors have learned so much, but remember, God is the maker of our bodies.
Right.
And he can heal our bodies beyond what they understand and know.
Right. Amen, so it's good the doctor gives a diagnosis, I tell people all the time, don't, don't worry about getting a diagnosis, cause you can pinpoint in there. You gotta worry about what's making my head hurt. And you go to the doctor, the doctor tell you where, you, 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 you got a something, 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 and, and whatever he diagnosed it with, thank the doctor, Lord, it, now I know how to shoot that, I know how to shoot that what? That round straight at that, at that, at that. Bull's eye, I ain't gotta say, well, God, I don't know, I don't know if it's a migraine, I don't know if it's stress, but I have been told what it was, so now I'm shooting a bull's eye and calling it by name and, and getting it out of here. Okay, is, is that, did you, that make, help you out? Thomas Soder?
It did, I was just reading your, your sentence there, I don't get the sentence, but.
Sense knowledge.
Most of our churches today are sense knowledge people, I guess I haven't been in those churches.
Yeah, oh, yeah, a lot of them, yeah, a lot, anytime, anytime they're not preaching what this, what this, what Jesus preached, is sense knowledge, they preaching you their, their, amen, their philosophy. What they think, see, you can take any script out this Bible, Janie, and make it, make it, turn it into a, a gospel, or turn it into a, go out and start preaching on it. But the Bible say, we can't take just one scripture, we can't just take a text, we got to know the context of that, amen, symptoms are subject to change, that's right, Dr. Calico. So what I'm saying, when it say sense, sense knowledge church, he's saying churches not preach, that's not for you, God, they can use God's word, but, but is it really what God, uh, is saying? And that's why we have to think, that's why we have to get, that's what's so good about Bible study. Yes, ma'am, you have something, sister? Okay, you have something there?
They know what it's saying.
Yeah, right, yeah.
But they don't know what it's saying.
They don't understand, yeah, they know what the scripture is saying, that's why they can quote it, and they can kind of preach on it, but do you really understand? That if Jesus say, by a strike, you will heal, do you really understand what they're saying? That mean you healed of all diseases, it took, the Bible say, Jesus took thirty nine strikes, what? Save one. And you, and by all those strikes he took, you healed, some, some people teach you, churches teach you, God put sickness on you, cause he trying to tell you something. They tell you that, that's not God. I done been in church and talking about, God put that on you, cause he trying to tell you something. Don't be talking, God don't, God don't put no sickness on nobody, sickness is of the devil. And God don't, that's why I got to leave, so we, we have to do that, all right. Uh, we, we gonna go outside Facebook out, cause I'm, I'm four minutes over my time, amen, remember Facebook, you don't have to stay in the shape that you in, cause the king gonna put you back together again, before you sign out, amen, join us again, amen, on this coming Friday. Amen, we, we will be, amen, I think we're gonna do, amen, Zoom only, we're gonna be Zoom only on Friday, because our speaker is, 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 is not gonna be, amen, here in the KC, so we're gonna do everything on Zoom, amen, on Friday, and we will start at seven o'clock on the dot. So once again, if you're interested, amen, in coming into the Zoom room, text me, email me or whatever, and I'll make sure that you get the Zoom information. So you can come here, once again, Zoom only, on, amen, this Friday, follow, amen, Kingdom Praise Worship and the Word Service. Once again, we'll see you then, amen, on Friday at seven o'clock, we love you, Kingdom blessing to you.